Mr. Kuzmarski, seconded by Dr. Gallo. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Evelyn Slabauer, 43, going ahead, please. Just a quick question on, um, what is it? D, the conferences and workshops, digital citizenship. What does that refer to in a school sense?
So how students use the Internet, how they use social media, that sort of thing. How are they citizens online?
Okay, okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Emails? Okay, thank you. Dr. Shown, do you have a report for this evening?
Absolutely, I do.
Thank you.
Can everybody hear me? Yes, we're good to go? All right. I just want to give the board and certainly the public an update on recent security discussions that we've had. On March 13th, we met with Chief Vitale, Captain Jaffe, all of our principals, Lisa Rizzo, Dennis Ferrer, and Kyle Bleeker. It was a meeting that we tried to have for a couple of weeks, but like this week, snow got in the way. We discussed our current procedures together and the work that Captain Jaffe has done, those we should consider implementing. We began to review an extensive list of those things that we've collected through the security email that I have and conversations that we've had. And that list included a number of things which I'll go into during the second meeting that Kyle was able to have with some of our custodial staff. We're going to schedule another meeting shortly, but what the Chief of Police and Captain Jaffe are going to do is to take a look at all those recommendations that we have and determine what makes sense for us and what doesn't. You know, we had a list, and I have mentioned this on February 28th, about whether it was backpacks that were clear, whether or not it was Kevlar blinds, whether or not it was bulletproof glass, whether or not it was armed guards. There were a whole list of things that were on that list. And some may make sense for other places, some may make sense for us. So what the Chief and the Captain are doing right now is taking a look at those, providing recommendations and comments based on what they know about us, and then we'll come together. So we had that meeting on March 13th. Two days later, Kyle met with our Supervisor of Building and Grounds as well as our onsite manager for our custodial team. He wanted to review and discuss security measures we have in place. He wanted to discuss those that have the opportunity to be enhanced and those that we could potentially consider. Some of those things include, and I emailed all of this to you earlier, so you'll have it, so you don't need to necessarily remember, were the logistics of creating a man trap or double entry doors in our schools, which allows there to be bedding in between letting a person in as opposed to then just walking straight into the school. For those of you at the high school, you're familiar with this. You have the front doors, then you have a general area, and then you have another set. Lenape has the same thing, Joyce Kilmer has the same thing, but Ramapo Ridge does not. You get buzzed in and you walk straight in. So what does that look like for us to do a double door entry? The second thing we looked at was would any of our schools benefit from redesigning the location of their front office, specifically GW and Betsy Ross? When you think about it, if you walk into GW, walk, 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 you go up the stairs, you make the right, so you're in the building for that period of time. Betsy Ross, the same thing, walk, 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 you make a left, and then you go into the office there. Does it make sense to consider putting those offices in another area so that you have a person right there as soon as a person walks in? So we looked at that. We looked at, somebody has to pronounce this for me, Bollards? How do you say it?
Bollards.
Bollards. Bollards are these cement-type, I can't say it, Lisa Rizzo, are these cement-type pieces that can block areas where cars and kids could be. It's a nightmare when it comes to snow plowing, but it will stop a car from going into an area that perhaps students are waiting. We're looking at that. Because although that isn't necessarily the big in front of you security measure, security is about safety as well. And it's about safety with kids who come and go. So it's not just about what you do to walls and windows, it's also about what you do to your environment within your school. So we're in the process of looking at that. What does that look like? Where would it go? What would it cost? Because it's my intent, our intent, to develop a list of recommendations to the board, the rationale for those recommendations, and the costs associated with it. And what can we do, whether it's now or whether it's over the summer when you don't have kids coming and going which allow more for that. We also discussed alarms and panic buttons. We discussed something called a blue light. Some of our buildings have a blue light inside, so when you go into a lockdown and outside, you see the blue light blinking. So if you've got people going out for lunch, staff, and they come back and the blue light blinking, that's their signal that the school is in lockdown and to go away, right? You've got kids coming back from an open campus at the high school. If the blue light is installed and we look to do that, it's a visual that's saying, my school's in lockdown, I need to go away. Those are simple things that we can do quickly. All of our schools don't have that. So it's a matter of consistency for security across the board because our kids move up, they get used to certain triggers, certain lights, certain commands, so we're working to move in that consistency. A lot of those ideas that Kyle filed up, followed up on two days later, were ones that we discussed at the meeting when we sat with the Chief and Steve. So the blue lights I talked about. And then we also finally talked about, and I know Kyle is doing this, the placement of hallway gates. Some of our buildings have gates that'll block off hallways when we have after-school activities. They don't allow access to other wings. And we've got, some of our buildings are fairly large. So we're in the process of looking where they would best be placed, how they would work, who would lock them, what it looks like, but at least we'd be able to block off tens of thousands of feet within our buildings that someone wouldn't have to. They all sound like great ideas, things that are doable. So we're going to be working toward that and giving the facilities committee recommendations. On March 20th, Mayor LaFerrari, Council President Hermanson, Captain Jaffe, Chief Vitale, Kim Baron, Ben Kuzmarski, Lesa Conoco, Rick DeSilva, me, Lisa, Dennis, all met to have a meeting together. This is one we had been trying to plan for some time, but snow as well. These security measures, among others, were really the basic part of our conversation. But I do have to say this. One of the things that was very, very clear in the discussion that we had is that working together and moving forward is paramount to all of us for the safety of our students and our staff. And I walked away, I know that Ms. Baron put this in writing to all, and that was simply, what a productive meeting. It was good to sit down, but it is the beginning of what I hope to be more, moving forward. So all these things that I talked to you about, what we're doing in our schools, were discussed with the Council President and the Mayor, and I think it was a really productive meeting.
And Detective, Lieutenant, just now.
Oh, I'm sorry, Guido Busanelli, my apologies. And that's not on your list, but you guys are right. That's my report for this evening and an update as to where we are with recent security discussions.
Thank you.
Your word.
Thank you.
Mr. Bleeker.
Okay, yes. This evening I have the first of a couple of budget presentations for the 18-19 budget. I'm going to do that very shortly. One other thing I would like to mention, though, is I said it last time, I want to say it again tonight, thanks to our maintenance and custodial crew for their job with the most recent snowstorm, hopefully the last one of the season. Thanks again to them for their work, late nights and long hours, making the school ready for opening today.
Do you have anything to add?
Okay.
Do you have anything to add for you?
Uh, no. We have the, there we go. Can everybody see or do I need to turn on the center lights? Everybody's okay?
Okay.
All right. Can we get the light?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's this light?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Particularly the one right there.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. So.
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Tonight we're going to be doing the first of three planned presentations for the preliminary budget for the 18-19 school year. As I had said earlier in the budget season, this did get delayed slightly because of the new budget address by the Governor. That budget address did get delayed because he is a brand-new first-year Governor. Typically, that has happened before, so that has pushed some of our deadlines back. This preliminary budget that's on for action this evening will be sent to the county office for their review. We expect usually that it comes back to us a few weeks later. They sometimes have some recommendations for us to consider. We bring that to the Finance Committee and then to the Board. We're then going to have a final adoption of the final budget right now scheduled for the April 25th Board of Education meeting. Again, because we are on a little bit of the revised timeline due to delays at the state level, we may have to adjust our timeline ourselves accordingly for that 25th meeting, but as that comes up, we'll of course let you know. Right now, we are shooting for the April 25th meeting to adopt the final budget for the 18-19 school year. This evening, one of that's going to is just a discussion on some of the revenues, the different parts of the budget, and where the different funds for the 18-19 budget come from. In my last slide, I'll give you a brief view of what the April 4th meeting as well as the April 25th meeting would have as far as information related to the 18-19 budget. So for next year's budget for the 18-19 budget, as is currently proposed, we have a tax levy source of income for both the operating debt service funds of $63,609,561. It's going to be an increase of 2.68% from the prior year. For those that don't know, there are several different funds within the budget. Operating is where the majority of our expenditures and appropriations come from. Debt service is the fund that is specifically dedicated to payment of principal interest payments from bonds that have previously been approved by the taxpayers. For state aid, this was the one number that came out just last week and got delayed due to the Governor's budget address. State aid for next year is expected to be $2,685,621. It is an increase from the 17-18 year of $258,501. We have other revenues of $485,056. Those other revenues, they incorporate interest, extraordinary mislignance revenue, the semi-reimbursement that we receive, funds that we also get from rent and building use from outside organizations. We have fund balance, that's also another component of the revenue and the source of funds for the 18-19 budget. That dollar amount is $2,599,668. What fund balance funds are, these are funds that are carried from the 16-17 budget. So when we closed out that budget on June 30th, 2017, when the auditors completed their job and produced the financials for us, they determined that based on the account code that we follow, there are funds that we are required to put in from that year into next year's budget. That's one component of it. The other component of it is as we input the budget into the budget software, the software itself, based on the formulas that it has, also determines that a small amount of funds should go directly towards the 18-19 budget. And again, that is for both the operating account and the debt service account, debt service fund issue. Lastly, the last source of income that we have reported on the budget are federal grants, state, and non-public grants in the amount of $717,200. What these grants are are two federal grant sources, IDEA and NCLB, as well as non-public grants. Non-public grants are funds that we receive from the state of New Jersey. We are the custodian for. They pass through from us to various non-public entities within the township of Mawa. Again, we are a pass-through for those. And the IDEA and NCLB, again, are funds that we receive through the federal government Property tax information. So based on the tax levy that I had said in the prior page of $63,609, the very top number, what that is as far as an impact to the taxpayers of Mawa, there are a couple of the things that impact that. The first is the net valuation taxable. What that is, is that's the overall value of the township, of all the properties and businesses and things that are in the township, the assessed value. For 2018, that amount is increasing by approximately $13 million to $5,720,337. The school tax rate has increased to 1.0968. And what all that means is for every $100,000 of assessed value that your home has for the calendar year 2018, the budget that we have proposed would increase at $18.60 for the year. That's again, for every $100,000. Taking for example, a $500,000 home, it would be an increase of approximately $93 for the year, again, for the 2018 year. Lastly, budget calendar for the next few meetings. Again, this evening, apologies to change that to March 22nd because of the delay, but a presentation of preliminary budget, review of revenues and source of impact, which we just prepared. At the next meeting, April 4th, we're going to review of staffing for the 18-19 budget as well as going to a little more detail on debt services, special revenue, two of the funds that I spoke about that comprised the funded. And lastly, on April 25th, we're going to review of special education, another large component of the budget, benefits, as well as doing an overall budget summary. And again, that's the evening that we would adopt the final budget for the 18-19 school year. That concludes the presentation for tonight from the Board. Are there any questions? Thank you very much.
Mr. Bear, are you looking for us this evening?
I am.
My report. This evening, I would like to congratulate the Mawa High School Symphony Band on receiving a gold rating at the NJ SMA Region 1 State Band Festival. The band earned the Outstanding Woodwind Section Award, and Senior Brianna Stues earned the Outstanding Piccolo Soloist Award. So kudos to them. I was there with Ms. Slabauer, and it was quite enjoyable, right?
Yes.
They were wonderful. So congratulations to the symphony band. Board committee reports. Anyone have a report this evening?
Just a very brief report. Prior to tonight's meeting, the Negotiations Committee met briefly to discuss next steps with the, in the continuing dialogue with the MAA and supervisors in the district. And I just sort of wanted to throw in two cents. One of Mawa's great strengths is its financial base. We have a very solid financial footing to which we can educate our students with, and we can pay for some security items. So it's very healthy to be in a position like this. When I go to a school board's meeting, I run into other board members and they're scrambling to find dollars, and we have a very solid financial base. It's important that people know that. So even though the tax increases here will be slightly higher than it has been the trend of the last few years, we're still playing well within the guidelines.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a liaison to the Mawa Schools Foundation, and I just wanted to share with everyone some of the things that they were talking about, in line with the school safety issue. They were talking about a program called Dylan's Wingman, which was founded by a parent of a Sandy Hook victim. If you go online and look for that, it's information about students becoming friends with other students in the school, students that don't have a friend or have a buddy to become their friends. So they're looking into that. They're also looking into creative interventions program, and it's been presented to the principals for their consideration. They also talked about buddy benches, and they thought some of their funds might be able to use to create buddy benches that might be able to be made by our high school working classes. And that would be places where kids can go and sit with someone else if they don't know somebody, they just want to. So it's getting in the ground level where emotional, social component of the safety issues are concerned. So I'm grateful to them for discussing this at their meeting. And that's all that I have on that. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or non-agenda items?
The play was awesome.
Oh, the play was awesome. Yes. I have to say, sorry, proud mama. The play was awesome.
Kudos to you.
You really were.
And I love the ticketing system, and I think we've done it for like three years now. It's awesome.
Yeah, it was very, very easy. And you can get a videotape if you want to see the show.
Kim will have lots of it.
I have a London library. Yes, I will.
And I can honestly say I may be the only board member ever who actually come from that stage in 1993.
Very nice.
Several years there myself, mostly in the backstage.
Again, kudos to the orchestra, which was made up of only five seniors. We do have two adult members, one student who had graduated last year, and all the rest were freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, and they were fabulous, really, really wonderful. Let's see. Okay. We have a motion to move on new business. I'd like to take A through G. Mr. Kuzmarski, seconded by Dr. Morthe. Any comments, questions on any of those items? Let's get together. Okay. Could you please take both of them?
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes. And now I'd like a motion to move on new business, A through C. Mr. Gallo, seconded by Ms. Conoco. Any discussion on this? Questions on any of those items? Okay, could you take both of them?
Ms. Navertish?
Yes.
Dr. Morthe?
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
And Ms. Baron?
Yes. Okay, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. When you come up, please state your name and your address.
My name is Sue Brand. My address is 5 Derrick Court, Mawa. I'm a parent. Can I back up? I'm a parent.
We didn't hear you. We can hear you.
I don't even have to say.
No. You're good to go. Well, it's kind of a, to be on the tape that actually has to.
Anyway, I'm a parent in the Mawa School District since 2003.
It's my sixth year as a parent at Mawa High School, and I wanted to talk with you about the walkout that was held the other day, March 14th. My son, Jack Brand, is the student government president of the high school. Dante Lorco is the vice president. The student government, all the grades of the student government, we met with the student government advisors and principals on two different occasions about how to handle the walkout. I know my son expressed interest in going outside, and this was a national movement, and he felt that that was the best way to represent our town and our country and really engage in a peaceful, civil discourse about the issue that's obviously on everybody's mind, given that, you know, Mawa is about to invest a ton of money in social security, and I'm glad to hear that. Unfortunately, the students were told they were not allowed to leave the building. They had another meeting. They expressed the same concerns that they wanted to walk out and have speeches outside, and they were told again, absolutely not, and anybody that left the building would receive discipline. The student government advisor, in fact, notified the students, my son particularly, of the link for the National Student Walkout, and actually told him that he felt so strongly he should indeed walk out regardless of the consequences. On the day of the walkout, the students were allowed to either go to the gym or the auditorium based on their grade, and were allowed to give speeches. Unfortunately, the speeches had to be reviewed by the high school. So what happened was some of the students walked out against school policy, knowing that this was an important movement, and I think we can all know of leaders in the world and in history that have had to go against the rules because it was an important point. And I stand by my son and the other kids who walked out, and the vice president of the SGA who walked out, because it wasn't easy. My son is not a rule breaker. He's going to attend Cornell University next year. He's the number one student in the high school. You can look that up. His vice president is attending Dartmouth. These are not the rule breakers. These are the leaders. And I would, I hope that I live in a town for 16, is that really true, Mawa, if I lived in this town?
Fifty.
2018, almost 16 years, and I felt empowered and proud, and I'm thrilled to be part of Mawa. But I must tell you that I'm incredibly disappointed in the way the school district handled this. I don't think that the children should have gotten discipline at all. I know that other districts in Bergen County, I know the Superintendent's Association was given a letter basically encouraging the students to protest. They didn't say walk out, but they certainly said, let the students engage in a peaceful protest. Mawa would not bend on this, and my student, my child, and I support him, walked out, knowing that he was risking whatever discipline. Cornell University issued a gigantic statement that they would happily encourage their students to engage in public conversation about such an important issue. So knowing that the institution that he's going to attend in September representing Mawa was such in favor of this, and I know Dartmouth did the same, I know schools all over the country did the same, I feel so disappointed in my district in that they didn't support our students, and they didn't let them walk out. When they did walk out, they had a peaceful conversation, they talked about the importance of gun control, and the importance of mental health, you know, the issues that really are affecting our students on the ground every day. And it was meaningful and important, and the kids got a lot out of it. And I think they felt empowered, and I'm glad they did. What happened after that was everyone that walked out, God bless you, got a detention, fair enough. Unfortunately, my student, my son, and his vice president got suspended from the student government. So I don't understand that. I don't know the policy. I read the student government constitution, I read the Code of Conduct. They did leave the building, which is against the rule that the principal already declared, but in what I know of school law, the disruption was already approved. The principal already agreed to let the students leave their classrooms if they wanted to, and not everybody did. Nobody was chained to my son and his vice president being dragged out the door. They didn't say, hey, you 50 kids, come with us. They went outside, and other 50 kids who agreed with their beliefs and who had their own beliefs that this was important, left the building and had peaceful, important protests. I disagree with their suspension from student government. I spoke with Mr. Pascal. I told him that I disagreed with this suspension, that it was over the top. It was changing the focus of our community, empowering our students to be on the national scene in such an important movement, to school policy and attendance and being in violation of a school rule. We need to think bigger, and I need to encourage my child, and I do, to think bigger. And if that's going to go against school policy, then I stand beside him, in front of him, behind him, forever. I'm so proud of him for doing that. The principal said he needed time to decide what to do. He came back and said my son would be suspended for a month and then resume his presidency, and his vice president was removed from the student government. I wanted to bring to your attention that we are, I am incredibly upset at this decision. I don't think it's fair that either of them should get extra punishment. As the leaders of the school, they were doing what they believed. They didn't drag anybody outside. They didn't have a secret plan to upend the principal's role. And I feel incredibly strong that in whatever power you have, that those suspensions and removals be lifted, and then they go back to leading the school. These are the kids you want to lead your school. I promise you, these are the students who you want to represent Mawa. They are the best you've got. I'm not kidding. I know everybody has kids, and they're all good. But we have the top of your school at the top of your school. So respectfully, from whatever power you have as the Board of Ed, I ask that you go to the high school and have them reconsider the suspension and the removal from student government, because I want, I want to continue to be proud of coming from this district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi, Sandra, your hearing marks.
If you haven't already received, it did send, I tried to get everyone on the board the email today. If you didn't get it, check your trash, it might be there after you read it, but try to get it and read it first.
They receive everything you've sent.
Okay.
Including the one you did right before this meeting.
Okay.
It's all on there.
Perfect. If I'm missing anybody, please let me know so I can include them in any future correspondence. But thank you. So actually, were one of you the ones that walked out, or did you guys get suspended or walked out?
Yes.
I want to thank you. I want to personally thank you for doing what you did, because I have young kids in this school.
Do you have something that you'd like to talk to us about?
Yes, I would love it if you would have considered the previous speaker's statements and take them very seriously, because I personally agree with her. I feel that I would, given the chance, I would love to thank those young students who have done that, because they do have young students and young children in the schools, and they can't speak for themselves right now, which is why I'm here and I'm going to be here. They can't speak for themselves, but the kids in the high school can, and they are going to be the ones that are making the changes in our government, in our legal system moving forward. And so if I had the opportunity to personally thank each and every student that did walk So I'm really looking forward to hearing the next time from the woman that just spoke that this has been taken into consideration.
I won't be following up publicly.
No, I'm not asking for it.
But you're saying you're looking forward to the next meeting and...
I would hope to follow up with her.
Right, no, 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 but I would not do that publicly. This is something about her children is most appropriate that I do that in personal conversation.
I look forward to knowing in the future, not via you, there was no request there, Dr. Shum. So my requests are, for a little bit more specifics, because I appreciate that it sounds like you guys have done a lot since the last, I hear a lot of discussions going on. So you've made a couple things. First of all, who actually makes the decisions? Because I'm hearing a little bit of the police department in chief doing their own thing and then coming to you with recommendations, but I'm wondering, too, who makes the ultimate decisions for what steps are taken?
It's really threefold. We work with the, with the police, they are the security experts. They give us the recommendations and then the rationale for reasons behind things. We meet with our administrative staff to make sure it'll work in their worlds, as they only know it best. They make a recommendation to me, and I make one to the board. The ultimate decision with everything in this district lies in the Board of Education through my recommendation.
Perfect. And then there would be a vote on anything, if needed?
Yeah, if needed, that is correct. There are some things where we'll just move ahead as far as the facilities committee will say, yeah, that makes a whole bunch of sense, and then in a report, Mr. Gallo will say, we're moving with this safety measure, knowing that the board would embrace it. If it's something that's certainly cost prohibitive or rather extensive, doesn't mean that the board wouldn't accept it, it just means it may require a conversation.
And to echo what Captain Jaffe also said is, we're not going to play all our cards out and open in terms of what our security plan is, so there may be projects that are undertaken that just happen.
Yeah, and absolutely. I mean, I hope I was clear in the email that I'm not naive enough to think that any parent should know everything. It completely undermines those security measures. So I appreciate that. Now, in all of that decision-making process, where are the parents? So I can thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak here and having a voice here, and I feel like you've all been, you know, receptive to that, but where are we in the decision-making process? So in other words, you all determine, you know what, we've decided to consider this, you know, we don't think we're going to do it, and that's the end of it. Where or when do you get to a point where you say, you know what, we need input from the parents, from the town?
That would be these meetings.
I would, I would, I would agree with you.
This would definitely be, come to the meetings.
And the email address.
And the email address gives parents the opportunity to put...
But the email address are giving you suggestions. They're not at a point where if you, so for example, someone in the town makes a suggestion, right? You guys decide, this is great, we're going to look into it, we're all taking it under consideration, and we're going to move forward with it. But not everybody else in town has seen that email. It might be something major, it might be some, I'm talking about major things, I'm not talking about, you know. Where are we, where does that come up with the parents? How do I then know, you know, my neighbor has made a recommendation, the board's considered it, and they're going to do something with it?
Really, I'm going to go back to what Ms. Barron said in a lot of state, and it comes down not just with security, but anything in our district. If we're going to, if we're going to change our, the company that provides our cafeteria, if we're going to change our curriculum on the third grade level, I don't reach out and say to parents, what do you think about this reading? I rely on my educators to do that. Whereas with security measures, we are not security experts, and we'll all admit that. So it would be in these forums, it would be emails to the, the security info email, which is reviewed and is looked at, it's not something that just sits there. I can tell you how many I have and who sent me twice, and those that require a phone call back, I pick up the phone and call back. So that's pretty much the answer to, to your question.
And how are they reviewed? Is it just you looking at through the emails? It's not going through the boards directly to you?
Correct.
Okay, so you're evaluating what needs to be...
No, I'm actually thinking on a list, and I'm giving it to the security experts to evaluate.
Everything?
So all the, everything, everything.
Okay.
I think as the superintendent outlined at the beginning, there was a meeting with the chief and with Captain Jaffe, and the list of items that came from that email are...
All on a list.
Are currently being considered in terms of their value to improving security in the district.
And I'll update that as we move forward.
Okay. In that, you also said that you have the expectation, and tell me again what you said, that you had the expectation of you would be putting a list of recommendations together with your rationale and the cost. Who is that list being issued to? Is it something that's going to come in front of the board?
It was something that'll go to the facilities committee.
To the facilities committee, and then will you have a report on that here that we'll be able to hear about this?
Again, depending on the confidentiality of the initiative, it'll be appropriately discussed.
Okay. Can I, and when is the plan for that to happen?
I have no idea. Soon, soon. I'm thinking people together, Ms. Brenner. I don't have another meeting scheduled with the, with the police chief.
And as the police, you know, I'm sure they're working on this one by one.
They're working on it, and we'll schedule a meeting when they do, but they work with us, not for us. And that's a little bit different when you go as far as timelines are concerned, working with people, if that, if that makes sense, and it's a truth. We're grateful for their efforts, but they've got, and you've said it beautifully in the emails that you have sent to the chief of police, that you've been kind enough to CC me on, on how outstanding they are. And they really are, and we're very blessed having come from other school districts. This police department is really second to none. So because we're working together, I'm not sending an update every, you know, day or two as I would perhaps to somebody within districts saying, hey, listen, need an update. So I anticipate that relatively soon. Will it be at the next board meeting? I don't know.
Can you tell me if, on the list and where we are with the decision-making process on any of these things, are we considering putting armed guards in the school at all times?
We have not even addressed that as far as the recommendation list is concerned. I haven't received a rationale or what that would mean for us. There's a lot that goes into that. It's not a matter of a yes or a no. It's, it's the equipment itself, it's who's trained to do the equipment, there's, where does it go, how many doors does it go at, how many school grade levels does it go at? That needs to be a conversation with administrators to see what that looks like. And again, it is not, and I said this at the meeting, and it's worth repeating, Ms. Barron, it is not cost that drives our decision-making, nor my recommendation, let me be very clear.
No, I agree with you.
And I'm saying it out, so I'm telling you that there are cost factors, and there are things that are cheaper than other things, but that is not going to stop us moving forward one way or the other. We're going to do, in my opinion, what we've always done from curriculum to security with what's right for our kids across the board. So that is part of what's on the list, because that was brought up during the course of all of this, as well as Kevlar, as well as, you know, door jams, to bulletproof glass, to clear backpacks, there are a whole bunch of things that are being discussed, and I don't have a timeline as to when all of the answers are.
So I think at this point, that remains my biggest concern, because the timeline, I mean, how do we, where can we be holding everyone accountable for meeting certain timelines? I mean, how many days is it acceptable to leave the potential for a child to bring a gun into our schools open? Do you know what I mean? How do you put a timeline on that? So we've got to, I hope you understand my frustration, because I'm looking for...
The police understand the urgency of this. So they're not sitting back and taking their time to do this. So they are working as quickly as they can. Now, whether they can give us the timeline, no. I mean, they're, they're doing what they can do. So, I mean, we'd have to, I hate to say that you have to trust them, but you'd have to trust them, that they're taking this and doing it very urgently in their process to give us all the information that they need.
I think, I think that we have honestly demonstrated, from the time this all went down, from Parkland moving forward to everything in our district, that we have been very forthright and very timely with our updates and our meetings, and I would venture to say have progressed more with things, tangible things that have happened, and a thought process more than other districts, perhaps. So when you ask, how do you hold accountable? I am held accountable by the Board of Education. They know that security is at the forefront. So as a parent, you need to trust in your elected officials that they are holding me accountable for a job that they anticipate with a reasonable timeline. And that doesn't mean that safety is not important, and it doesn't mean, Ms. Brenner, that something couldn't happen tomorrow. It could have happened yesterday or the day before Parkland as well. What we've tried to do is educate our community with how much we have in place, how much more we're doing, and I think that I have personally demonstrated as your superintendent that I'm not letting this go by the wayside and not have answers for you. I'm prepared with the report, I'm giving people information, making meetings happen, but I can't tell you that by April first, this, this, and this will be in place as of year. And that's my honest answer to you. And I can see that you're not pleased with that, so I'm going to... Bring it over to Ms. Barron?
I'm going to give you another thing. If you want to go online and get a copy of the New Jersey School Security Task Force Report and Recommendations...
I've read it.
A lot of what's in here, we already have in mind.
I understand. And please, I cannot say enough how grateful I am, honestly, to each and every one of you for everything that's being done, and to the police chief, and to every one of the police officers in town. I honestly, I can't, there aren't enough words to express my gratitude for everything that's being done. But there also aren't enough words for me to express how critical it is that we...
We understand it. I have, we have children in the district, we have children in the schools.
... Hold ourselves to weak, hard dates of things that are going to happen, hard things. I want to know, maybe my last question I'll leave you with this time, is what hard measures do we have in place that physically prevent a child from bringing a gun to school?
We have locked doors, we have teachers who are familiar with what is going on, we have...
I think the first response, silence, was actually the appropriate response.
Because, Ms. Brenner, unfortunately, I think, I think what you're looking for, and you've said this a couple of times with all due respect, is we've done a number of really great things in our district moving past this. And although you've slightly acknowledged that, I think what you're interested in is armed guards. And until I stand before you, because you've said it twice, so if I may, until I stand before you and tell you that I have vetted it properly and made a recommendation to the board, and we have them in place, I don't want the public nor social media, knowing this is being taped, thinking that this board is sitting here not doing anything. And I walk away from these meetings, at least the last two, thinking that that's what it is that you believe. And as a parent, as articulate and as careful as you are with your children and their safety, we are thinking the same way with the 3,000 that we have under us. I don't know when armed guards, if and when ever will meet this table as a recommendation, but I can tell you that it will be vetted properly, as will the blue lights or the door jammers we choose to put behind every door. All of those are equally important safety measures, and the armed guard is great if he is aware and in the same location perhaps as someone in the building with something that came in, or a metal detector.
A metal detector, we also have metal detectors.
So I'm feeling like you're looking for me to say that, and at the next meeting, I can almost guarantee you I won't have that properly vetted, nor do I know whether or not I will have nine board members who say this is what we want.
Now, the metal detector issue, I know you've been interested, excuse me, I know you've been interested in the metal detectors. I've spoken to a number of parents who do not want their children going through metal detectors. So now, when you're talking about the parent input as well, we don't know how the community feels about this.
So how do you find out?
They have to come to our meetings or send emails.
So do you take the number of emails and the people at the meetings as a vote? Do you know what I mean? How do you really know you have a pulse on what's...
We live in, we live in a representative democracy. Every November, three of us are up. That's the realistic fact of it, is we go out to the community, we state our position pro or or con with regards to any specific security measure, budget, anything you name it, and they're going to elect us or they're not. I mean, that's, that's kind of where we are.
But so how, right now, do you have a pulse, a pulse on the...
I would say honestly, with respect to...
Those major security...
With respect to armed guards and metal detectors, I would say it's, I mean, three schools, 50/50. And there are people adamantly on both sides of that, that say, do not put a gun in that school. And there are people saying, you need a gun tomorrow. And so I need to take all that in and say, okay, do I want a security guard? Do we want even, are you talking about metal detectors? It's, it sounds easy. It changes the culture of the school.
Absolutely.
Okay, it does.
Yep.
And that's a lot to consider. And from a board perspective, we don't run the school district. We don't, in that sense, we, you know, we hire, we have administrators, very capable administrators, I might add, who run it and who make recommendations to us that they have been, that has been vetted, and this is their recommendation. And now that's up to us to accept or not, but ultimately, the recommendation comes after it's been vetted from police, building principals, child study experts, the works on what's this going to mean.
But we're going to look at that.
Absolutely.
We're definitely going to look at that.
And I would say, you know, I've spoken for a couple of minutes here, I would say my mind is open, I am, I am willing to consider anything. Like I said, I have three children in three different schools. I worry every day. But what that means ultimately to protect them, I don't know. I, you know, I run a town, I run a local town for a living, but I'm not a security expert. I don't know how to secure a building and save my life. But I know the people that do will speak to the superintendent, will speak to us. And I am more than comfortable with whatever recommendation comes forth.
I look forward to hearing more.
Thank you.
You will.
Absolutely.
Hello, Ms. Barron. As a veteran of the United States Army, who has handled an M-16 and M-60, to have guns in the school appalls me. I'm sorry. But what we really need is legislation to get those weapons off the streets, okay? If you are pointing an M-16 at someone, and they are just pulling the trigger and shooting, there's no recourse to that. The person on the other side of that gun is going to be dead. Then...
Thank you, but that's not something that the Board of Education handles. You have to tell your elected officials, and New Jersey's pretty strict about that.
So I would rather have a gun-free school zone, okay? I don't believe that guns should be in the school. I don't believe that you should have someone who's going to be able to point a gun at another, at a student in the school.
Do those people who come in to point guns at students follow the gun-free zone signs? No.
But the thing is, you know, and I've said this before, these kids who are, who are doing this, they are kids who have gone through that school system. They're disgruntled. They are angry. They are angry at the way that they were treated. They are, there's a disconnect somewhere with those students. Now, our job as educators should be to figure that out and get help to these kids before they get to that point where they're bringing the weapon in the school, you know? And if we can't do that, then we're failing.
And we are blessed in Mawa to have a fabulous child study team and support in this school that other districts call us for support because of how highly recognized we, our people are.
And I'm not worried about the security. I'm not worried about the security. I'm more worried that we are doing all we can to, to support these kids and families that need help before they get to this point.
And we have, we are fortunate, because we do have staff like that, that are fabulous in this district.
So, that on that, regards to the walkout, and my son came in here at that meeting that night, and he was beside himself, upset at how the whole thing was handled. And I asked him if he wanted to get up and speak, and he ended up deciding not to. And I wrote a letter the following morning to Mr. Pascal about how disappointed I was in our district also. You know, this is something we should have stood behind these kids, and we should have embraced them, and we should have done the right thing to show them that this is how you make change in this country, you know? You, you do peaceful and you do protests, but peaceful ones. So the disconnect between the whole thing was very disappointing to me. And I would like to find out how the students feel about having armed guards in the schools, because ultimately, it's the students who are going to be affected every day by walking through metal detectors and, and having the armed guards. So I'd like to see what the students think, you know, besides just the parents, you know? And the last thing with regards to safety is the high school parking lot and making that safe to exit the parking lot. And have we looked into that?
We have.
Yes, we have.
Because I'm more worried about a child getting killed pulling out of there and getting hit than, than a gun being brought into the school.
We have, the facilities committees in the process of looking at the traffic study.
We've received a traffic study from Bozrom.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to get up as a parent and speak about the walkout issue. So I want to start by saying, regardless of whether I agree or disagree with the political agenda surrounding this particular walkout, or whether I believe or don't believe a walkout does anything to solve a problem, as the mother of a high school student senior who walked out on March fourteenth, I respect him and his fellow students for taking the stand. Now, the definition of disobedience is refusal to obey rules or summon an authority. So students don't lose their First Amendment rights during a school day, but the courts have generally recognized limits to the exercise of free speech when it materially and substantially interferes with the functioning of a school. The First Amendment does give, does not give students the constitutional right to walk out of class and exit their school buildings free of consequences. We have the right under the First Amendment to say whatever we would like without fear of being jailed or killed. However, it doesn't protect us from the consequences of failing to obey rules and regulations. An example of this would be using racist language or bullying...
An example of this would be using racist language or bullying other students on school property. Do you have a First Amendment right to use such speech? Yes, you do. Are there consequences for disobeying the rules in school, the school that doesn't allow such language on premises? Also, the answer is yes. An act of civil disobedience is invalid without a punishment, and the district can't show favoritism for one point of view or any particular issue. If administration grants students permission to walk out to protest gun violence, they must also grant permission to any students wishing to protest any conceivable cause. No holds barred. This is more than a simple slippery slope, this is akin to a slide that's been greased. So from, in my opinion, the only fair policy covering protests such as a walkout that occurred on March 14th is an impartial stance by the administration with consequences, which is what our district did and why I support Mr. Pascal and our administration